Good evening and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Community College Board of Trustees. I am Ashley Waravice, President of the League of Women Voters of San Francisco. The League is a nonpartisan but political organization dedicated to promoting active and informed participation in government. For those of you unfamiliar with our mission, the League works to ensure that all voters have access to unbiased, nonpartisan information so that they are prepared to make their own choices on Election Day. We run free forums such as this. We produce a pro and con guide on local propositions and we partner with SF Gov TV to produce educational segments that explain candidates' platforms as well as discussion on the local ballot measures. More information on these services is available in your program and can be found at our membership table and at our website. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes candidates. However, we do take stands on issues. For further information about candidates and election issues, visit the website www.sfvotes.org. Our voter services programs rely completely on the generosity of the community. We do not charge the public for these programs in order to ensure that all voters, regardless of their means, have access to fair and balanced information. If you would like to support programs such as today's forum, please take a moment to make a tax deductible donation to the League Education Fund and help ensure that the League can continue our dedicated outreach to San Franciscans with free events in communities such as yours. We have volunteers ready to collect your contributions at our membership table. And remember, you can also support our programs by becoming a member and getting involved in the community. Make sure to visit our membership table in the back and for more information, please visit our website www.sfvotes.org. We want to thank our co-sponsor for tonight's forum, EATV, Educational Access Television, which is operated at City College of San Francisco and our venue tonight, City College of San Francisco Ocean Campus, Studio A. This candidate forum is being recorded for later cable cast on EATV-1 Comcast 27, Wave 27, and on U-verse, and EATV-2 Comcast 75, Wave 31, and also on U-verse. Please check the website for more information at www.ccsf.edu/eatv. The League's comprehensive, nonpartisan election information, including ballot analysis, is also available at www.sfvotes.org. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our moderator this evening, Allison Washburn. Allison Washburn, a longtime member and a past president of the League of Women Voters of San Francisco, has moderated numerous debates over the many years. She currently serves on the City and Counties Sunshine Ordinance Task Force, a position she has held for the past seven years. She was re-elected to a second term as Chair of the Task Force earlier this year. She is also a past president of the Boards of the YWCA of San Francisco and Marin and of OWL San Francisco and is now a member of the Board of the Aquatic Park Neighborhood Association. Dr. Washburn received her PhD in Experimental Psychology from Johns Hopkins University and is now Associate Professor of Psychology and Gerontology at National University as well as an adjunct faculty member at Saybrook University. She has lived in San Francisco since 1984, moving here from Maryland with her two young children, who now live in the East Bay with their growing families. We are very honored to welcome Allison Washburn.
Thank you, Ashley, and I'd like to say that I'm very pleased to have been asked to moderate this debate. I'm really looking forward to learning more about the many issues that relate to City College so that I can be an informed voter next month. So, the voters for this upcoming election will be asked to vote for one candidate for a seat on the City College of San Francisco Board. First this evening, you'll hear from two of the four candidates for the Community College Board of Trustees, Wendy Aragon and Alex Randolph. A third candidate, Tom Temporano, was unable to attend the forum but submitted a statement that is included in the program for you to read. They will have a chance to present their views on issues affecting the Community College and to answer your questions about those issues. To submit questions for the candidates, look for a volunteer who will be handing out index cards. We'll collect all the questions by, I have to update the time here, by about 7:10. I wish to remind you of our ground rules. No literature, campaign signs or buttons may be distributed or posted inside this meeting room. Candidates and their supporters are expected to be respectful of other candidates and the audience and to help maintain quiet during the forum. Candidates are asked to make no personal attacks on other individuals. No videotaping or flash photography is allowed due to the fact that EATV is taping this forum for broadcast. All right, here are the procedures for the forum. The candidates each have one minute to answer questions you and the audience submit as well as questions that have been submitted to the League of Women Voters website at sfvotes.org. Each candidate will answer every question. Any rebuttals may be included in the candidate's closing statement. The timekeepers in the first row will hold up a yellow card to signify that you have 15 seconds remaining and then they'll hold up a red card when it's time to stop. All candidates have agreed to ask their supporters to be respectful of other candidates and the audience and to maintain quiet during the forum, and I ask you to respect that commitment. Every aspect of the forum will be equally fair to all candidates. You have many important decisions to make on November 3rd. Today's forum will give you an opportunity to be heard. Now let's begin. So I guess there is no opening statement. We'll go right to the questions, which actually provide you with the opportunity to explain why you're here tonight and talk about your priorities. So, the first, each question, you'll have two minutes, we'll have two minutes for each question and each of you will have one minute to answer. And I'll begin first with Ms. Aragon and then we'll swap orders each time. And I may get mixed up, so I'm trusting everybody to help me on this. It shouldn't be too difficult with two people. All right, so the first question, we'll go to Ms. Aragon, you have one minute. Why are you running for this position?
So I'm running for this position because I want to ensure this college is here for people like me. I grew up working poor. My parents did not have the opportunity to go to college and they made enormous sacrifices for us to have that opportunity. I, about in the sixth grade, started experiencing a lot of academic problems and was the kind of kid that my school wanted to just throw away, being told I was not smart, I was not motivated, that I didn't care. And that really does, that tears you up inside when you're that young, hearing those messages. So, when I got to my senior year, I had failed enough classes to not graduate and I wanted to drop out and my father really encouraged me to go to summer school and then go to a community college. I say community college saved my life because I was able to go through programs like EOPS that helped me to become a better student and go from being a DNF student to an A and B student within a year, and I want to be able to pay that forward.
Thank you. Mr. Randolph, you're next.
Sure. I'm running as the incumbent for this seat because City College is a very special place. For the past five months, I've seen every single day the impact and power of City College has on people's lives. When I moved here at age 16, I didn't have a lot of money, I didn't speak, my English was not as good as today, and my parents never had the opportunity to go to college. So Community College was my pathway to a better life and I would have not had the chance to be here today as a trustee at City College without my education I received at my community college. Public service is in my blood and when I saw that City College was in trouble, I felt that I was the right candidate to make sure that we stay open, we stay accredited, and we tackle some of the financial problems that we have over the next couple of years. The past five months have been amazing. I've seen every single day how hard our faculty, classified staff, and students work here at City College to make this a special place. And I will commit to you that if I win this election, that I will work just as hard to make sure that this place is open and continues to be the beacon on the hill it has been for 80 years.
Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Randolph. What do you think the primary job function of the Community College Board Trustee is?
Well, I think one of the primary functions is to govern the Community College District. Over the last five months and actually the last year, a lot of the Board Trustees members participated in trainings to actually learn about what our job is. We regulate the finances, we pass the budget, we hold the transfer accountable, we make sure that, you know, our students are represented on the board, and we make sure that City College continues to be that special place in the city. And I take this role very personal because I was a community student. I know what it feels like to go to a community college and succeed in life. So I've spent the last five months running around town, going to different community meetings, just talking as a trustee, reconnecting with the citizens of San Francisco to rebuild the trust that they have lost in this institution. I make sure that everybody knows that we are open, that we are credited, that we are a great place to be at, no matter if you want to transfer, if you want to get a certificate, or if you just want to be a lifelong learner. City College is here for you and we offer you whatever you would like to get.
Thank you. And I'll repeat the question from Ms. Aragon. What do you think the primary job function of the Community College Board Trustee is?
As Alex said, it is oversight, it is making policy, it is making sure that this campus runs, sorry, this college runs efficiently. For me though, it is really also about ensuring that student voices are heard. Our students have really been a casualty during this whole accreditation crisis and over the last three years, working with the Safe City College Coalition, I've heard a lot of students, you know, tell me their stories about how they feel left out of the dialogue, how they feel that the Board hasn't always represented them, how they feel that there are programs that are, they're facing cuts that they really rely on and that they, they need this college, why they need the college to stay open. So I think making sure that that voice is heard, that hasn't been on this Board for a very long time.
Thank you. The third question, I'll begin with Ms. Aragon. What is your number one priority as a Board Member?
For me, workforce training is really important. I was raised by blue collar parents. I'm very proud of the work that they, that they did and I don't feel that we should be calling anything a second tier job. These are, these jobs are well paying, they're union jobs, and they prepare people who don't really have the desire or really don't feel that they want to go to a four-year school to be able to have the training that they need.
Thank you. Mr. Randolph, what is your number one priority as a Board Member?
For the past five months, my main priority has been to make sure that the faculty, staff, and the administrators have all the resources and tools they need in order to be successful and get us through this accreditation crisis. Keeping our accreditation is the number one goal that City College should have because if everything else fails, you know, it doesn't matter what we do afterwards if the community closes. The other thing is enrollment growth. We've lost 30% of our student and if you know where we get our funding from, it's full-time students at City College. We lost 9,000 students, which is about $30 million of our budget. So for the past five months, I've served on the Marketing Enrollment Committee, I've visited high schools, I've connected with nonprofits, I've visited the Bayview, Visitation Valley, Chinatown to reconnect with our students and make sure that they continue to go to City College and re-enroll at City College. And part of that is, you know, pushing back against the negativity that we have had in the news media and in the public because of this accreditation crisis.
All right, the next question goes first to you, Mr. Randolph, and the question is, what kind of education should students expect when they decide to enroll at City College?
World-class education. Regardless of what the Accreditation Agency has said around City College, they've never questioned the quality of instruction that our faculty provide here at City College. I've met so many former and current students of City College over the last five months in this campaign who've said that the best experience that they've had was at City College. They might have taken a yoga class or a dance class, they might have been part of City Build, getting a great union construction job, or they might have transferred to UC School or a private school, even San Francisco State. The thing that they always said is that the quality of education, the faculty and the staff at City College was the best they've had over the entire experience and their entire life. And that is the story of City College, that we are that special place for everyone who is able to touch this place. That's why I'm working very hard to make sure that we continue to stay open and accredited so that we continue to be that place that people can expand the horizon and start their success.
Thank you. Ms. Aragon, what kind of education should students expect when they decide to enroll at City College?
So here at City College, we have some of the greatest teachers that are out there, but student success correlates directly with how we treat our faculty. Our faculty has been underpaid for quite a long time. They're making 8% less than they made in 2007 and having their classes cut. And I feel when we cut programs like Diversity Studies and focus on STEM, which is important, we are taking that, we cut the arts, we, we're taking away opportunities from students that they really are coming here for, that they're not necessarily focused on going into science, technology, math, and engineering. They want to have a field that they can really excel in. And if we aren't paying our teachers well enough, you know, we're overworking them, we're not going to provide the best education for our students. And I know that they try, they try really hard and it's, it is frustrating for them.
All right, you're actually anticipating my next question here, Ms. Aragon. How would you approach the budget for City College?
So, shared governance has been an issue at City College for some time, but I've seen shared governance work when I was at Deans College and on student government. And I think that making sure that everybody has the ability to weigh in on how we set the budget and we're meeting with faculty, we're meeting with students, classified staff, to ensure that we are passing a budget that works to everybody. I think that we also need to focus on programs like EOPS, Hartz, Guardian Scholars, and making sure that those are well-funded before we start paying administrators more than they should be making.
Mr. Randolph, how would you approach the budget for City College?
Well, I was actually proud to just pass the budget a couple months ago when we adopted it, when we finally got our local control here at City College. And the way I look at the budget is to make sure that we continue to provide an exceptional place here at City College. I agree with Wendy that our faculty is underpaid, our classified staff is underpaid and has worked incredibly hard despite layoffs over the last couple of years to maintain not only the current buildings but also the newer buildings that we have added. And when I look at the budget, I want to make sure that we pay our staff adequately and for the work that they put in, they should be compensated more than they are currently compensated. But also want to make sure that we continue to actually have a fiscal sound environment that we can prepare for some of the huge budget cuts that we might have to make over the next couple of years. We're losing stabilization funding, the parcel taxes is ending in 2021, and we are not sure if the state is going to continue to fund us through Prop 30. So when you look at the future, you need to make sure that you actually anticipate some of the potential issues and cuts that you might have to make.
Okay, the next question, I have to alter a bit because you've already talked about the fact that the faculty's pay is lower now than it was in 2007 and the fact that the full-timers are among the lowest paid in the state. How will you address, there are two parts to this question, Mr. Randolph. How will you address the next contract with faculty and is hiring full-timers, which tend to be more expensive, or part-timers, the priority?
Sure, very good question and I have to be careful because as a Board of Trustee member, I can't really talk about negotiations because we're in the middle of them. So I'm, I'm going to try to be as general as I can, but I want to also make sure that we're not just focused on the faculty salaries but also on our classified staff that also needs to be compensated and treated fairly here at City College. And, you know, the way I look at it is, you know, we need to support our faculty. They've put in a lot of time and a lot of effort to make this environment and, you know, students successful. And our classified staff work very hard to make sure that, you know, the building stays open and the building stays clean. And when you talk about the full-time faculty versus part-time faculty, we can actually be fairly proud here at, in San Francisco City College that we have the highest ratio of full-time faculty compared to others. I agree that our full-time staff members have been unfairly treated and need to be paid more and I think that the Board of Trustees is going to be working over the next couple of weeks to make sure that we compensate both our faculty fairly and our classified staff.
Okay, and to you, Ms. Aragon, the two questions. How would you address the next contract with faculty and is hiring full-timers versus part-timers the priority?
So I agree with Alex that our classified staff also works equally hard and needs to also be fairly compensated. Right now though, our faculty has put something forward and what they've been met with is pretty egregious, that it's nowhere near what they're asking for, it's nowhere near a living wage. And our part-time faculty are getting even less and they're really cut out of this deal. And as a former student, and I'm sure Alex can attest to this, we don't always care who's a part-timer and who's a full-timer when we have a teacher that we really care about and who's really educating us and teaching us and enriching our lives. So I think that we are, you know, we're in a good position where we treat our part-time faculty a little bit better than other colleges might, but we also need to make sure that they are well compensated and that our full-time faculty is compensated for what, you know, for what they're worth and that they're making what they're worth.
Thank you. The next question goes to Ms. Aragon. What programs do you think are most important to City College? What classes would you add? What classes would you cut?
So, I really hate talking about having to cut classes right now when we're in an enrollment crisis and we're not, you know, we're not fulfilling the needs of our students. But I do want to see more workforce development classes. I think that we have our Building Trades and Construction Council, who's been wanting to have their apprenticeships here. We need a pipeline into city jobs. Right now, we invest a lot of money into the College of San Mateo by training our city workers there. So I think that those are important to bring to the table. We also have the highest economic inequality rate in the country on Parleton Rwanda and I think making, when we are cutting programs like EOPS, we're cutting Guardian Scholars, Guardian Scholars isn't getting its funding, Hartz, our Veteran Services, that really does speak to the kind of colleges that we, we shouldn't have to have, that we want to have a college that represents all of our citizens in San Francisco and provides for people who are trying to elevate themselves out of poverty.
Thank you. Mr. Randolph, what programs do you think are most important to City College and what classes would you add or cut?
A very difficult question that Board of Trustees has to tackle with during this time and one of the issues I was alluding to earlier when, when I was talking about the tough decisions that will have to be made over the next couple of years because we could be losing 30-plus million dollars of our budget. I know that you kind of discussed about the budget earlier and when, you know, when you cut classes, you only cut access to education, but you also potentially lay off a faculty member that was teaching that class. So it's not an easy decision, but something that we might have to be made over the next couple of weeks and months. What I would like to see us focus on and maybe invest in additionally is some of the STEM and science-based classes. They say that over a million jobs are going to be unfilled over the next five years in healthcare and science and technology-focused jobs. I think that's an area where City College can grow, that's an area where we can look into expanding and actually potentially hiring additional faculty members. So that's something I'm very excited about and looking forward to pursuing.
Thank you. The next question, what role should City College have in non-credit and remedial education? Mr. Randolph?
Oh, I think City College has played and should continue to play a very important role in the non-credit areas. For example, just a couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend the Citizenship Day at our beautiful Chinatown campus where I've met numerous of our students who took ESL classes and citizenship classes where they actually were on the pathway to become citizenship of this beautiful country, just like my family moved here many, many years ago to start a life and live the American dream. So I think that in regards to enrollment, in regards to our mission, in regards to all the great things that City College does, the non-credit part of, of our community college is very important and I think we need to continue to, to support because it benefits so many people. It benefits seniors who want to continue to come to City College to be active, it supports our, you know, immigrants who come here to start a better life, and it supports, you know, just somebody trying to take a yoga class and actually experience City College. Some of them might end up coming back and take credit classes, so it's a wonderful pathway for a lot of our students.
All right, Ms. Aragon, the same question. What role should City College have in non-credit and remedial education?
Well, we're a community college, we're here to serve our community and if we're not offering these classes, what is that, you know, that kind of takes the community out of community college. I think that it's really important that we are having classes for our lifelong learners, that we're having classes for immigrants who are coming to learn English, that we, that we don't lose sight of that role. We are not just a transfer machine, we're not just a diploma mill like some of the for-profit colleges. We are here to serve our community and ensure that we have something to offer everybody who wants to come to City College. And I think there's a misconception that non-credit classes don't make us money. We still get money from the state for non-credit classes.
All right, the next question goes to Ms. Aragon. Students are concerned about the rise in cost of college. What will you do to make sure it's affordable for everyone here at City College?
So, one of the things I think is really important is getting rid of a program like NELNET. NELNET is the, is part of the current enrollment process where you have to pay within 72 hours or you're dropped, but you have the option to go on a payment plan. And I've talked to a lot of students, they're not able to make these payments by the end of semester and then they're penalized and not able to enroll the next semester. And I think if someone's making an earnest attempt to pay their tuition, that they should be allowed to keep enrolling and keep taking classes here. And getting away from NELNET is going to be one of those first steps. I think we can look at something internally in City College that's more student-friendly that doesn't shut people out.
Mr. Randolph, the same question. Students are concerned about the rise in cost of college. What will you do to make sure it's affordable for everyone?
No, I, I, I agree with it. I was fortunate enough as a Community College student to get the Governor's Fee Vayor so I didn't have to pay for tuition. But, you know, four-year colleges, private colleges, you know, there's 1.6 trillion dollars in student loan debt that all of us are burdened with. So that's why City College is yet again so special because we are still that place where people can go to and have access to affordable education. That being said, you know, I think advocating on the state level and even the federal level to make sure that the state and the federal government reinvest in community colleges. We are the place where people go to for pathways and a second or third chance. That's why I was very excited that my former boss, President Obama, made community colleges part of his State of the Union, where he's talking about making the first two years free for students. I know that we started to talk about it on the state level. Oregon started doing, doing the first two years of community college free. I think that's something we can pursue, something I'm going to be doing as a Board of Trustee member and something we've already started discussing.
All right, the next question, Mr. Randolph. What is the role of accreditation? Has City College, this is two parts, has City College been dealt a fair hand in the process? Looking back and moving forward, okay.
Well, looking back, even the state now agrees that our creditor went too far with threatening to close City College. And we had the opportunity at the Board of Trustees, I think at the last Board meeting, to vote to submit a letter to the Department of Education that actually accredits our creditor with our concerns, how activist and aggressive they've been. You know, from Speaker, former Speaker Pelosi to Congressman Jackie Speer, to the Board of Governors here in the state, everybody of Governors here in the state, everybody agrees that our creditors overstepped the boundaries by threatening City College. I think all of us agree that there are some areas that City College needs to improve on and work on. That's something that I know our chancellor, specifically our faculty and classified staff and students have been focused on over the last year. I'm very confident that we're gonna make it through this restoration status and really gonna continue to be open. And on the other side is, you know, working with our community members and business community members to stand up to the creditor and say, "It's not okay what you've done to City College."
Thank you. Ms. Aragon, the same two questions. What's the role of accreditation? And has City College been dealt a fair hand in the process?
So those of us in the coalition have been saying this for the past few years, that we felt that this is political, this was underhanded, that this was not right, and it's finally refreshing to hear that validated. I think the one thing that, the only good thing that came out of the ACCJC looking at City College was that we had to face that we have a lot of problems at City College that were not being handled well. There was some mismanagement of funds, there were a lot of people, you know, pointing fingers at each other on who was to blame, and, and I think that that really was an eye-opener for San Francisco. But I do, again, think that we, you know, we are being held to a different standard as a San Francisco City College, where, you know, this was an accreditor who was saying organizations like Healed College were working, and that should be a model. So I think when you have an organization that is praising for-profit colleges and their model, it really is concerning when you have them also accrediting public colleges like City College.
The next question is an opportunity for you to continue talking about accreditation, which is complicated. So, Ms. Aragon, what steps, concrete steps would you take on the board to keep City College accredited, or would you suggest be taken?
So I think we need to have more creative ways to talk about boosting our enrollment. Fiscal responsibility is really important. I know our Citizen Oversight Committees have started meeting again, and we need to get those back on track. So for me, those are two really important steps in accreditation, but also looking at that everything does come around to enrollment. Again, our NellNet, you know, our relationship with NellNet, our cutting diversity studies, our cutting of classes, not paying our teachers well, and making sure that we are, you know, we are on a path to restoring this college and making sure that we have an enrollment that is, you know, to where it was five years ago.
Mr. Randolph, what steps would you take to keep City College accredited?
The steps that I've already been taking since I started being on the Board of Trustees over the past five months. Getting trained, one of the items that came out of the accreditation crisis is the governance issue, making sure that the Board of Trustees is actually functioning and understands what it means and what the role of a Board of Trustees is. We participated in months of great trainings about fiscal management, enrollment growth, accreditation, to various issues that we never thought of, you actually have to think about as a Board of Trustees member. You know, looking at our enrollment, making sure that we continue to grow, working with the community members and make sure that people continue to see City College as a place to get their education. And the other thing that we needed to address was equitable distribution of student services. You know, we have everything mostly concentrated here at Ocean, and making sure that all of our centers that are the backbone of our community college, I mean, we are everywhere in the city, actually offer those services so that our students are successful, that our students don't have to travel across town, and I will continue to do that on the Board of Trustees.
All right, so you've mentioned a couple of times, both of you, about increasing enrollment. So, Mr. Randolph, first to you. How do you think City College can increase enrollment? What specific steps can be taken? Just lay it all out.
Very important question, and I think that as someone who served with Trustees Davila and Selby over the past five months in the Marketing and Enrollment Committee here at City College, that is something that actually we've been focused on. One of them was to reestablish our ties to the community and make sure that people know that we are still open and accredited, I keep saying it, but there's so much misinformation out there that people didn't even know that we still existed. So as part of that, over the past five months, I've met with numerous nonprofit organizations from Chinatown to the West Side, to the YMCA's, to the community, you know, youth developers. Last week, I spent a whole day at two high schools, Balboa and Lincoln, just reconnecting with counselors who are actually making those type of decisions about co-enrollment, about opportunities after graduation. Those are the ties that we've lost, and I'm looking forward to actually reestablishing a joint committee with the school board to talk about these important issues. We lost, you know, huge amount of high school graduates who are no longer coming to City College, and I'm working very hard to reverse that trend.
All right, to you, Ms. Aragon, how do you think City College can increase enrollment? What specific things would you recommend?
Marketing is important, but we've done a lot of marketing, and I kinda make the joke, marketing's like a Facebook invite where you, you know, you put it out there and like seventy people say they're coming and six people show up. It, it's really important that we start getting creative with what we wanna do with enrollment. One of the programs that I've talked to, if I've talked to taxi drivers about bringing the Taxi Driver Training Program here, I've talked to both veterans groups, seniors groups, and disabled groups about possibly doing service animal training here, and really looking at what we can do as a college and, you know, how we can be innovative in our enrollment practices and in recruiting. I also think that, like Alex said, going and reaching out to our schools is really important. I think one of the issues we do is, that we have, is we try to make high school students college-ready, but we're not really making younger students college-aware. As a person of color who came from a low-income community, it was really, it was a loss that I didn't have that at the fifth and sixth grade, the idea that I could go to college other than what my parents were giving me. I think we work in communities like the Bayview, the Mission, the Excelsior, we start talking to students about what their potential is and enrolling them, pipeline them in early.
Okay, we're gonna switch gears quite a bit here for the next question, which will go to you, Ms. Aragon. San Francisco voters have twice approved bond measures to build a community performance arts center. One hundred twenty-four million has been spent designing, no, twenty-four million has been spent designing the project, building the first phase of the project below the MUB building and preparing the ground in what is currently the Upper Reservoir. Completion of the project was halted by a special trustee a few years ago. Many still want the project completed. What are your thoughts about the project?
So I think the Performing Arts Center is, it's, it's critical, you know, we, we told voters we would do it, and it's dishonest to not follow through with it. I went to Deanna College, we have Flint Center, and Flint Center creates a huge revenue for Deanna College, including its student body, which uses probably about sixty percent of that revenue on student services. We are losing money, not just money that was promised to build this, but money that we could be bringing in, we're losing the opportunity for our students who can use that center for their education. It's really important we get this back on track.
All right, the same question to you, Mr. Randolph. San Francisco voters have twice approved bond measures to build a community performance arts center. Twenty-four million has been spent designing the project, building the first phase, preparing the ground in what is currently the Upper Reservoir. Completion of the project was halted by the special trustee several years ago, and many want the project completed. What are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of that center, and I wanna see it, it be built. I, that's why I think local control is so important, so you actually have a Board of Trustees who's accountable to the residents of San Francisco and care about what the future of City College looks like. You know, I feel that City College shouldn't be the only one on the hook for the financing of this city-serving institution. I think we can build on partnerships with the city to make sure that they participate in it. I know that the coalition who's working on the Performing Arts and Education Center has already made connections with potential funders in the private and nonprofit sector who are really interested in making sure that we have it. I agree with many, it could become a destination not only for our students to interact with artists, but it could be a performance center for the entire city, where people actually come to City College, learn about City College, and see all the great artistic opportunities that we have. Whenever you invest in the arts, and performing arts specifically, you benefit society, so I'm very excited about pushing this along.
All right, this is another question about land use, infrastructure. Students and faculty have used the lower parking lot on the Ocean Campus for years, and the mayor's office has suggested to the PUC, who owns the land, to make it available for affordable housing. City planners use photos showing that the lot is not used, but in actuality, it's used daily by students, faculty, and staff who must drive to work. What will you do to ensure that the twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand parking spots are maintained? Mr. Randolph?
Oh, I know it's a, it's a very complicated subject that City College is very concerned about. You know, on the one hand, you know, you wanna make sure that the city continues to provide opportunities to build affordable housing, to address the incredible crisis that we have in our city. At the same time, you wanna make sure that, you know, we continue to offer space for our students and faculty to park. You know, we are commuter school, people depend on their cars, unfortunately, in this day, to get to City College. Not everybody can take a bus, not everybody can take BART to go to classes because they come from, yet again, all over town to provide, you know, classes and resources here. So our, you know, Board of Trustees is very involved in the discussion with the mayor's office and the community meetings. We have a member, Brigitte Davila, who continues to serve on the advisory committee to make sure that our interests are involved. The other thing that it actually might impact is the Performing Arts and Education Center that's supposed to be built on the other side of the parking lot that could be impacted by this project. So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and I'm looking forward to working on them.
The same question to you, Ms. Aragon, I'll read it again. Students and faculty have used the lower parking lot on Ocean Campus for years, and the mayor's office has suggested to the PUC, who owns the land, to make it available for affordable housing. City planners use photos showing that the lot is not used, but in actuality, it's used daily by students, faculty, and staff who must drive to work. What will you do to ensure that the twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand parking spots are maintained?
So I'm the chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and we also have a representative on that, that advisory committee for the reservoir. However, I do feel as much as we need affordable housing, we do need to also keep in mind that we have students who are traveling, like Alex said, from across the city, but we also have seniors, we have people who are working poor, who take their kids to school, take classes, go to work, come back for classes to pick up their kids from school, and we have to be able to accommodate them. And I agree, the Performing Arts Center is a priority for this college, and we need to make sure that that's built first before we start talking about what we do with that reservoir. We, you know, we're here to serve our students. If we take that parking away, you know, we will lose a lot, you know, we'll lose a lot of students who are, who come here who rely on that ability to be able to drive here.
All right, the next question goes to you, Ms. Aragon. City College Resource Centers took a twenty-five percent cut in funding in October 2014 and additional cuts in August 2015. Do you have plans to restore that funding to resource centers which serve vulnerable students?
So again, those are the programs that helped me through college, and they're, I mean, I think that they're absolutely critical to have in a community college when we're serving so many low-income students. Part of the issue is that funding could have come from the parcel tax, and the parcel tax has kinda been sitting there for a while. Bob Aguilera, our last special trustee, said he did not have to adhere to the ballot language and put that money in the general fund so that we couldn't use it for what we needed to use it for. And I think that when that money's finally released, now the Board of Trustees has local control again, we can start funding those programs. They are, they are critical, they're important for students. Guardian Scholars, again, is a program that helps formerly foster care youth be able to go to school, you know, that's partially privately funded, but putting money into that as well. Homeless and risk transitional students is another program that, you know, helps to elevate people out of poverty. So I think that making sure that we fund those programs first and foremost, that helps us serve a purpose as a community college.
And to you, Mr. Randolph, the same question. City College Resource Centers took a twenty-five percent cut in funding in October 2014 and additional cuts in August 2015. Do you have plans to restore funding to the resource centers which serve vulnerable students?
Absolutely, I think they are, serve a very important role here at City College, and as someone who benefited from them when I went through community college, I can't tell you how many days I was struggling in my first semester and was ready to drop out, but thanks to the mentorship and the support that I have received at my resource center, I was able to continue my education. You know, it took me three years to get through community college, but I, I made it, and I made it to Berkeley, I graduated, and now I'm here in San Francisco, you know, living an amazing life. So I completely understand the importance these resource centers play. I know the other day, we inaugurated the Metro Academy at the Mission Campus that is supporting especially students of color who, in overwhelming number, come to community colleges, but only a limited amount of them actually transfer to other community colleges because we, they are struggling, they're not getting their support. So those are the students that we really need to focus on and really need to support because that's why they're here at City College, to have that opportunity, to have that hope and have that future.
All right, the next question, Mr. Randolph. How would you work with administration, staff, and faculty at the college? Kind of the nuts and bolts of how you would do that?
Well, I'll just give you an example of what I've been doing over the last five months. You know, as soon as I got sworn in, I made an effort to be informed, to be independent, and to be competent. And I pledged, anybody who wanted to meet with me, it doesn't matter if it's early in the morning, during the day, you know, if I have to take time off from work, or at night, I'm there and I'm variable and I'm accessible. You know, I have some phone calls with union leaders at eleven PM at night because they need to talk about an important issue. I have meetings on a weekly basis, almost daily, with the chancellor when we check in about items concerning City College. You know, I meet students when they wanna meet with me, you know, any time of the day or the weekend. That's what the role of a trustee is. You want to be accessible and accountable and responsible to the City College community, and that means that you are open to discussion, you listen, so that by the time you actually come to the meeting and you have to vote on these important issues, you actually know what the issue is about and the impact it's going to have on the faculty, the staff, and the students.
Ms. Aragon, the same question. How would you work on a day-to-day basis with administration, staff, and the faculty at the school?
As Alex said, I think being accessible to their needs is really important. We actually do have a great chancellor, Susan Lamb. For a long time, it was kind of a shut door when we wanna talk, when, I know the coalition would wanna talk to our last chancellor, Chancellor Tyler. I think that making sure that you're there for people, that they know that you are willing to work with them and hear them out, that you're not always gonna agree on everything. You know, I'm really lucky to have the endorsement of the faculty union, but they also know that sometimes I'm gonna have to make hard decisions as a trustee and that aren't always gonna work for them, but we are at least here to hear each other out and talk about the issues and make sure that we are building a bridge between these three communities. We've been very divided for the last several years between classified staff, administration, and faculty, and students, and we need to bring that back together.
Ms. Aragon, the next question. How do you think City College is portrayed by the media? And what do you think the general public thinks of City College?
So, you know, voters have always invested in City College at the ballot box, and I think that's really important to, to recognize, that, you know, when the parcel tax was up for a vote, that passed by, you know, over eighty percent, even at a time when City College was, we were hearing that City College might close, that it was in trouble, that it was mismanaged. I think that making sure that we have, you know, that we're out there talking to our public, our community, our public members about why this is so important. I think even The Chronicle in the beginning kinda gave the college a bad rap, and I think as this accreditation crisis has gone on, The Chronicle, The Weekly, The Examiner, and even national news is really focused on City College and what, you know, how far it's come during this crisis. So I think that in the beginning, it was negative media, but it is, I think people are starting to see the value of City College.
Mr. Randolph, the same question. How do you think City College is portrayed by the media, and what do you think the general public thinks of City College?
Yeah, unfortunately, one of the things that have come out of this accreditation crisis is this negative perception about City College, one that it was, you know, actually closed, that we actually lost our accreditation, and that scared a lot of our students and potential students, actually from all over the world, away from coming here. And that's unfortunate because the accreditation report never said that our quality of education here was in question. Thankfully, I think the one thing that we have going here in San Francisco is that there's so many people who have actually attended City College who know how special it is and how great our teachers and faculty and students and opportunities here are for their life and for their overall well-being, that that has probably countered some of the negativity that have experienced in the press. But I'm very excited, I'm very hopeful, I think we have turned a corner. You see increasingly positive newspaper articles all over the city and news about City College and all the great opportunities that we provide, you know, and I think that's, that's gonna be very exciting for all of us to continue to do.
All right, we're getting close to the end, but we have two sort of philosophical questions here for you. And, Mr. Randolph, do you feel that the City College model is a sustainable one?
Yes, it might not look the same it looks right now, but I think City College, no matter what century we are gonna be in, will continue to be that special place in San Francisco. will continue to be that special place in San Francisco where people can go to, to find out what they want to do in their life or just experiencing new things. And I think that has worked in San Francisco. That's why San Francisco Community, City College is actually known for throughout the state, for all of the different opportunities that we provide. You know, we train our first responders. We provide people an opportunity to go to four-year colleges. You know, we help seniors continue to be active. You know, immigrants come to San Francisco, and they go to City College to learn English and to become citizens in this beautiful country. So San Francisco, and that's why I'm so excited to be a Board of Trustee member here is because it is such a special place. And when you travel around the state and you talk to other trustees or other community college administrators, they know what City College is. They know how important it is to our community. And I'm always so excited to talk about all the great things that we do here on a daily basis.
Ms. Aragon, the same question. Do you feel that the City College model is a sustainable one?
I do. I think that, again, we have a city where economic inequality is huge. And we have people who come from all walks of life. I think that's the really special thing about City College is that it is a place for everybody in San Francisco to feel welcome. It's not, you know, your typical suburban community college where most people are going to transfer with a few people going for lifelong learning and vocational classes. This really does create an opportunity for our city to grow and to give everybody here, whether you're rich or you're poor, or whether you want to transfer, you want to, you know, go and become a carpenter, or you want to take a yoga class. I think that it is something that really makes City College unique for San Francisco. And I think that, that's similar to a lot of other community colleges in urban metropolitan environments, that it is something that is meant for all the people who are here.
All right, both of you have anticipated this last question in various ways, but here's a final chance to explain. First of all, Ms. Aragon, what makes City College better than other colleges throughout the state?
I think when we look at our diversity and, you know, the programs that we provide, it really, again, like I said, it is different than, you know, a college like Deans or Foothill or College in Marin, where they really have a more specific goal because of who they're catering to. I think it, it's, you know, I took everything from, you know, physical geography to tap dance here. And I think that that's an experience I probably wouldn't have had if I was living, you know, in Los Altos or another community where I would take my community college for granted. I think that's what happens in a lot of these smaller areas. We do take our community colleges for granted. And here in San Francisco, we don't. We do love City College here, and we care about it. And we, you know, we embrace what it's had to offer us for the last 80 years.
Mr. Randolph, the same question. What makes City College better than other colleges throughout the state?
I'm so fortunate to be a member of the Board of Trustees and be part of this family here at City College. City College is truly a community college. People come here not for class, just specifically. Our faculty just doesn't teach and leave after class. Our staff just doesn't show up to work and leave after that. It is a community. People come here for more than just a job or just a class. You know, our students are so excited to be at City College and stay behind and be active and be involved in making sure that City College is successful. And that's what makes this place so unique. That's why voters of the voters of the voters support parcel taxes and bonds because they know investing in City College is not just investing in a community college, it is investing in our city and in our community. And that's why I'm so happy. That's why I'm running. Because I want to make sure that this community resource and treasure continues to be here in San Francisco for the next 80-plus years. And I know that everybody who's ever touched City College feels the same way.